Jesse? All right. Good evening, everybody. For the record, it is July 28th, 2022. Where's this year going? It's 5:15 PM. Time for the regular meeting of Wenatchee City Council. I've called the meeting to order, and always we start with our pledge of the flag. So, Councilmember Poyer, would you lead us?
Please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Poyer. Roll call. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, all seven council members present this evening. For those of you who have not been to a city council meeting in a while, we have adjusted our agenda to adopt with the Open Public Meetings Act. So, we actually start with citizen comments. Obviously, we have a presentation from the Goathead Warriors. So, if you're here for that, you don't need to talk now. And we do have a public hearing regarding our community development block grant in which we will take public testimony there. Anybody here who would like to address us about anything else? This would be a time you could come up. We'd give you three minutes. Ask for your... Come on up, Elvis, and give your name and address for the record, and we give you three minutes. No, you sit down, wave to all your friends at home that are watching on TV. All four of them. Yeah. Anywhere you want.
All right. My name is Elvis Garcia, and I live at 24 South Miller in Wenatchee, Washington. Like I said, my name is Elvis Garcia, and I just want to take a really brief moment to thank Mayor Kuntz and all the city council members for continuing to allow my foundation to fly our diversity banners in the city, both here and in East Wenatchee, although that's a different city. You know, I grew up in this town, and I left Wenatchee because I felt very unwelcome, a place where I couldn't be who I wanted to be. And so, I left, and I went to the big city where they were much more welcoming. Eventually, I chose to come back to Wenatchee and settle in here because this is what I considered my hometown. So, in 2019, when I moved back, I found myself being so scared again and filled with anxiety and stress if I was going to have to step back into the closet. And in that time when we opened up our business, I chose not to. Not just for me, but for all the young teenagers that felt like me. And I just wanted them to see that we're out there, and we're there for them. And if, you know, flying our banners up allows us to save one life, then I think it was worth any sort of pushback that the cities may have gotten. So, again, I just want to thank you for allowing us to continue our journey through our celebration of diversity. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Elvis, and it's our pleasure to do so. And, you know, we've gotten way more positive feedback and emails than I think we've ever got negative ones. So, thank you for doing it. Thank you for doing it for our community, and hopefully we continue to do it.
Awesome. Same here. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Elvis. Anybody else wish to address the city council? Seeing no other takers, we will work our way through our agenda. The first item is regarding the consent agenda, which includes approval of this evening's agenda, vouchers, and our minutes from a previous meeting. Now, would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from the previous meetings as written. Second?
Motion by my councilmember Huffaker, second by councilmember Kulas to adopt this evening's consent items, including the agenda, vouchers, and our minutes from our previous meetings. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a presentation from our good friend, Mr. Doug Pauli, regarding Goathead Warriors. Doug, nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Saw something on Facebook where you had the rotaries out working this weekend.
We had six rotary warriors covering Mission View School neighborhood on Saturday.
Excellent.
Yeah. No, they... This is the third consecutive year the Sunrise Rotary has brought a team out, which really helps us. Anyway, Doug Pauli, a lot of you I've met in the past. For those of you who haven't, I was born and raised here, and I work on the leadership team at Northern Fruit Company as a volunteer. In 2015, I started an initiative called the Goathead Warriors, where our goal was to take out all the goat heads, basically full eradication on the Riverfront Trail system. Those of you, Travis certainly, I know Mike, you're a bike rider who rode the loop trail on a regular basis, knew we had a huge problem. Families couldn't get around without getting flat tires. So, we were successful enough in 2015 to expand it to Wenatchee in 2016. I met with Frank. Frank came out. We toured some of the hotspots in the city. He grabbed a shovel. We covered a couple of streets.
He found a goat head at my office at 560.
A violator, anyway.
I felt awful.
So, I just wanted to give you a brief update on what progress we've made, what strategies we're using, and just so you're aware of it, because the city's cooperation has been so key in our ability to make progress here. So, I'm going to see if I can get the PowerPoint here doing what it's supposed to do. Yeah, there we go. The... Let's see. Look there. Anyway, we started out with just a basic strategy. Let's get volunteers on the streets, give them pre-shovels, leather gloves, black plastic bags, divided Wenatchee to 25 different neighborhoods, and said, hey, let's try and find volunteers to clear each one. And that's how we got our start. I will show you here. Let's see. There it is. This is a new weapon that we just deployed this year. If it's going to open for me. And maybe it's not. Spacebar.
Jesse, can you make that happen?
Can you do any better than I can, Jesse? If you can't, we'll just skip it. All right. Well, let's see. I'll just keep on going. That's fine. What you're about to see, this is the first ever in the United States goat head warrior advertisement in a theater. And this was done by...
I've seen it.
Brendan Morrison, who is a Wenatchee high school grad, got his graphic arts degree at Western. And Brendan's helping us develop materials. Anyway, I'll just keep going. There.
I saw it when I went to watch the Tom Cruise movie.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah. Anyway... Part of what our strategy has shifted to now, instead of just shovels, is we're really emphasizing the public education and just to try and increase the awareness. So, we have both the video, and then we have two billboards now in Wenatchee. So, if you look coming across the bridge or out on Wenatchee Avenue, you will see our goat head. I'll just keep on going here. So, this is our full-size billboard, 20 by 40, or whatever it is. And it's just a quiet reminder to people that, hey, this is something we really want to take out of the community. In this case, we're emphasizing the pets because if you walk with your pet and go over a goat head plant, you can have one, two, three, or four limping paws. The showing kind of a progress, the left, that's 2016. So, when Frank and I took our tour, that is one of the things at the Old Deaconess Hospital. And on the left, those are goat heads, solid wall coming across hundreds of thousands of thorns. And that happened every year. That was just... It's one of what we called a hotspot on there. If you go back now, what we had this year was one plant. So, previously, that would have taken me an hour and a half and five full garbage bags. One point, 15 seconds.
Wow. So, pretty cool.
Yeah. That is... Reflects the kind of progress. This is on Washington Street, you know, the big... Open lot that the Lutheran church owns. They, again, just typical Wenatchee style when we started... Was you just let them go. Yeah. So, again, we could take out four or five black plastic bags just clearing the sidewalk, and that wasn't touching the interior. Now, on the right, we've got a regular spray program going with the church.
Good.
And so, there's next to nothing. And when they do pop up, it's a few minutes with a shovel, and they're done. So, really big. This is on the Riverfront Trail. And what our goal was, starting seven years ago, is that anyone could ride around the trail with no flat tires, in this case, the father and daughter. And we are 95% of the way there.
Good.
There are still old seeds, so when it rains, plus heat, you have to go back out and clear further. But if you clear the same stretch, every year, it's dropping down. And again...
20 feet, 30 feet either side? How far you going?
Yeah. Well, we're going out as far as we need to go. And so, the... We... On the edge of it, there's almost nothing. But if you go out 10 feet, there's hotspots. We've got a Boy Scout troop that'll be out Saturday morning, and we'll be going after several of them. But the Riverfront Trail is an example of where you can achieve eradication. It's persistence. It's consistency. If you let the plant go and drop seeds, as you all know, those seeds can last for six or seven years.
Yeah.
So, you've just guaranteed that you're going to be infested for another six or seven years in that particular location. Thus, this early proactive going at it is so important. Just an example, they may be out now with the supply chain disruption, but this is $169, really good mountain bike at Costco.
Okay.
And I share that just to illustrate, this is a transportation issue because there's a lot of families in Wenatchee who have young people or teenagers who cannot afford the cost of a car, of the insurance, of gasoline, of the maintenance, and the whole thing. But $170, you can get something that can get you from point A to point B. The problem is that if it has a flat tire, a bicycle is worthless.
Yeah.
And when I do Wenatchee streets, you see... In the alleys in particular, you see these commonly where people just gave up. Too many flat tires? It's worthless. So, they'll give it away. If you think about it, if you all went home every fourth night and found two flat tires on your vehicle, the city council would probably be pretty motivated to do something about it because, same thing, a vehicle with two flat tires is worthless.
Yeah.
So, from a transportation issue, you have to ask yourself, if we have 8,000 kids in our school system, does it matter that they can't ride a bike?
Yeah.
The plant starts very, very small, as you know. That's probably about an inch and a half in diameter, sprout starting out. But there is nothing that stops a goat head plant.
Yeah.
There's nothing that eats it. There's nothing that kills it, other than an herbicide or shovel. So, if you leave that plant that starts in May or June, it's going to go to 2 feet, 8 feet, 12 feet, 20 feet. And by the time it hits 20 feet, you have hundreds of thousands of thorns and seeds coming off of that sucker. So, it's where the only way to eradicate it is to be proactive. If we sit back and just kind of wait to see what happens, and it keeps getting bigger and starts dropping those seeds, we don't win. This is an example of a street in central Wenatchee. That's one plant on the left growing on the sidewalk. Same plant on the right has been taken out, put in a bag. And... But again, the homeowner there, it's the only plant on their entire property. They didn't know it. And as you know, summertime, you're on vacation, maybe you're traveling, maybe you're working in cherry season, so you're super tired. And it's not that they want that to be there. In seven years, I've never had a homeowner who said, gosh, I just love having goat heads on my property. It's like my roses.
Love the flowers.
Doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Exactly. So, when we are walking down the sidewalk, we are stepping out when we see that, and we take it out. One of the question mark issues is, well, gosh, Doug, are you trespassing? And the answer is, yeah. If I step onto that and take that out, I am 2, 3 feet onto someone's property. 49 out of 50 property owners are going to say, thank you. The 50th is going to be, by God, no one steps on my property. And I'll apologize.
Yeah.
And I'll put him on a list. And we'll say, hey, if you ever go by this house, don't go onto it. Just call the city compliance officer.
Yeah.
And it works fine. But anyway. Let's see. And for some reason, my slide is not changing.
The one in front is changing. The one on the side screen isn't for some...
Oh, here we go.
There we go.
Whoops. I just got behind. Let me go back here. Oops. Now, I'm going way, way too far. Here we go. When you herbicide a plant, you see when these big plants? Some people think, oh, I'm going to get out my, you know, my roundup and just spray it. And that's okay, except for two problems. One, the thorns are all still on the ground. And two, those thorns, it kills the plant, but not the seeds. So, thus, if you see us with these black bags where we put it in the bags, if all we did was herbicide it, we would just be continuing the problem versus taking it out. But anyway, what's noteworthy on this, if you can imagine, if you are walking your dog down the sidewalk, and someone has herbicided that goat head plant, well-intended, I'm killing it, right? But those seeds drop. If he walks across that, his paws are going to be shredded.
So, where is that at?
Pardon?
Where was that picture taken at?
This is... You know, Frank, I cannot remember that one. This is actually, I think, down closer to the waterfront.
Okay.
It was a construction zone where a plant had grown big. They'd herbicided it.
Got it.
And so... But that's a real... That is not faked.
Oh, I know.
But anyway, so if the dog walks across it, it's there. If a vehicle drives across it, all of those stick in the tires. And so, that construction contractor, whoever, is driving down the road, and they are shredding off these thorns with seeds inside them and spreading it everywhere they go. If a bicycle rides across that, it's game over. You're going to have not just two flat tires. You take the tire off and get out your patch kit. You're going to have so many thorns in that tire that you're going to have to throw away the tubes, throw away the tire, start over. If you're talking a cheap tire, you might get away for like $60 or $70. If it's an expensive tire, it'll be 100-plus. And so... And if you've got a family of four, oh, guess what? There's another $400. If you're upper income, not a problem. Lower income, you just finish your bicycling. You're done. One of our heroes, Todd Davis, is the spray program, Andy Greer, Street Maintenance with the alleys. They have been huge in helping us get the alleys close to zero.
Good.
Again, we're not there. There's still seeds, but we are making super progress on it. And that has been one example of the city's being hugely helpful. This is Mike Plank. He's the manager of the Trek Bicycle Store, also a former firefighter, really good and with what he does. And so, he's helping us on Fifth Street here. Again, you can see that plant is right next to Fifth Street going up to Wenatchee Valley College. And that's a major bike lane. And all of the seeds from that, if we didn't take it out, would be going into the bike lane. Steve Godfrey is a super volunteer from Kashmir, and he's... He comes all the way to Kashmir, down to Wenatchee, east Wenatchee, to cover neighborhoods. It's amazing. You recognize a familiar commissioner? Out at 6:00 AM.
Good for Bob.
Yeah. Covering central Wenatchee neighborhood for us. This is a Mormon church group who's... Mormon church volunteers, missionaries who are coming out to help us. This is the Rotary Group that just helped us on Saturday. And I'm just giving this as some examples. Travis has been out with the Evergreen Mountain Bike Alliance. Usually appreciated, so... But... And these are Northern Fruit. When we finish with cherry season, we occasionally round up a couple of folks and help cover neighborhoods as well. Benedicto Sixto... Excuse me. Benedicto Sanchez is, I think, 88 or 89. Covers a half mile of the Riverfront Trail. If you see him out there, say thank you. So, just a couple more slides. I just wanted to illustrate, with the progress we've made, we have knocked way down in everyone actually neighborhood. But this was taken this weekend. This is an alley that's behind Mission Street, and you can see the abandoned house on the left. They're letting them go, and those goat heads do not stay on one property. They go through the fence, they go across, they spread, which is why it's so important to take them out. This is on the Miller Street, just below the high... Just north of the high school. And again, one plant growing out onto the sidewalk. Again, that's a major bike lane that's going to both Pioneer Middle School and Wenatchee High School. So, anyway, I put down... These are all the different government agencies we're working with right now. Wenatchee is on the top for a reason because your staff, you know, starting with Mayor Kuntz, the council, and a lot of your departments have been really helpful in cooperating and supportive in trying to take this eradication effort forward. So, deeply appreciated. And I put these two guys on here because they are in south Wenatchee in a trailer park. I was clearing it. They came up, what are you doing? And so, I kept on going. They came back up. Look what we found.
Oh, good.
Anyway. But that's... Look at that determined look on the left.
Yeah.
That guy's got a warrior's look. That's the kind of commitment that we really need from the city of Wenatchee, you know, coming from the council, going down to the managers and the staff. And if we put that kind of effort into it, again, it's going to take time. It's step, step, step. But if anyone who's familiar with the infestation levels, we've made monster progress. And the... If we stay at it in three or four years, it will be tough to find a goat head plant in most Wenatchee neighborhoods. And the ones that do keep propping up in the heavier infestations will take them out. So, anyway.
Well, thanks, Doug. I appreciate all you've done. This has been a great five... Five years, six years?
This is six years of Wenatchee.
And appreciate... I know we've helped you some, and you've helped us some. And just keep holding our foot to the fire when we need stuff.
I realize you have a lot of responsibilities, but this one's important.
Yeah. Just keep... Keep the foot on the pedal, and we'll do what we can to help you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Doug.
Appreciate it, Doug.
Okay. We've got half a dozen or so action items. The first from Mr. Erickson regarding rejecting the pool repair bid. So, this is something we talked about a couple of weeks ago when we last met. So, David, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. So, yeah, this evening, I won't cover a lot of the background on the pool project because we talked about that last time. But basically, we have the decision in front of you to either accept or approve the bid that we received for the pool project or reject it. Real briefly, so that we took the project out to bid. Earlier this summer, we received one bid from the pool company. That's what they're called. They're out of five. The cost estimate for the project was between 1.2 and 1.6 million, and the bid came in right around 2.1 million. So, it's a little bit higher than what we... We and the engineers had anticipated. So, since we received the bid, we actually... We talked to the one bidder, and they said that if we rebid the project, if we rejected and rebid the project, most likely, it would be a higher bid coming in the next time if they choose to rebid it. We've also heard from two additional companies that are interested in the project. There's no guarantee that they would actually submit a bid or not. And they did say that their schedules are filling up for 2023 at this point. If we do rebid the project, of course, there's no guarantees that we'll get bids or we'll get more bids or we'll even get lower bids. But that's the risk we would take, you know, if we rebid it. I can give you a quick funding update. So, for the project, we have that $350,000 youth athletic facility account grant for the project. At your next council meeting, we will have coming forward acceptance of a $533,500 Department of Commerce grant that we received for the project. And then, next Wednesday, the Recreation Conservation Funding Board is considering our request for an additional $350,000 for the project, grant funding for the project. The staff at Recreation Conservation Office staff is recommending approval of that. So, that meeting is in the morning on Wednesday next week. So, if you total all those together, we would have about 1.2335 million for the project. And that would then require, if you accepted this bid as it is, about $900,000 in city funding to do the project. We're too late into the construction season this year now to be able to do it because it's about a three-month-long process. By the time you pull all the plaster out, put it back in, get it to cure and everything, we run out of weather. So, it'd be an August-through-October construction next year if you accepted the bid this evening. Or if we rebid it, it'd still be next year.
Okay. So, staff recommendation is to decline the bid. Look to see if we got these other two grants. Go to bid sometime later this fall. And then, obviously, the pool season next week, next year, we try to open with what we have. And then, when the pool closes in August, then hopefully get it fixed.
Correct. Yeah. You know, our biggest concern, only receiving one bid is troublesome, especially when it's so high. If it was a nice, super-low bid, then okay. One might be okay. But it makes me very nervous just with the one... The one bidder.
Right. Any questions for David? We do have to officially reject the bid, though. So, that's what this process is doing today.
Your Honor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to reject the bid from the pool company for the city pool repair project.
Second? Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Hornby, to authorize the mayor to reject the bid from the pool company for the city pool repair project. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, David.
Thank you. We will get it back out to rebid in September with probably a closing date in early October. So, we should know going into budget then...
Okay.
...where we stand.
Perfect. Thanks, David. Declaring certain property surplus to the needs of the city. Laura.
Good evening, council. Laura Gloria, Executive Services Director. That item before you is a resolution declaring real property surplus to the needs of the city. What that means is specifically for 136 South Shalane, which is the former fire station. So, this action would state that the city no longer needs this building for a public use and would allow us to move forward with listing the property and potentially looking at offers and redeveloping the property. So, there are no offers or anything tonight. This is really just the sort of kickoff to allow us to have the authority to go ahead and move forward with a disposition or a development agreement with the future buyer. So, we anticipate that we will list it. If the council moves forward with this, we anticipate that we will list it with the local real estate agent. Probably about 45 days in terms of accepting offers or receiving offers. Probably about 45 days in terms of accepting offers or receiving offers. Bring back some sort of recommendation to the city council, probably through the committees at first, and then back to the city council in general. We would anticipate that, again, it would be some sort of disposition and development agreement. I know that the council's been very interested in what goes there. It's not just a matter of selling it. So we're hopeful that we'll get a lot of interest in the property. We already have had quite a bit of, of interest in the property to date. So again, this is simply the resolution to go ahead and declare this surplus. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is the survey complete to take the parking lot off of the, off of the parcel?
Right, so this only includes the legal description for the building itself and the adjacent stalls. I believe there's eight to 10 stalls around it. You might be able to put a couple more, you know, depending on where, where the future property owner would like to do that.
The back parking we're keeping for the city's use?
Correct, but the, but the parking adjacent to it will stay with the city.
Does that create any limitation problems for a future building owner with parking needs?
No, in our downtown code, I think there's, that one doesn't have any parking requirements.
Right.
So, it would be like McGlynn's, it doesn't have any parking requirement. So, there is, again, a dozen or so, there's on-street parking. So whoever buys it's gonna have to take that into account when they look at it and look at their future development. We felt that the parking was too necessary for our needs here to include it.
With some of the property transactions we've done, we've established essentially covenants. Sometimes what we wanted, but in this case, I think we would want to discuss or consider some measures that would not be extremely limiting, but preserve the historic character of the structure itself. In other words, you don't get to tear it down.
Right.
Yeah.
Or do modifications that would be on our historic appearance there.
Yeah, I think obviously, development agreement will help with some of that, but it only helps between us and the developer. Who wouldn't take the developer from selling it to somebody else and doing something different with it? It's eligible to be on the historic register, but it's not. So, I suppose if we wanted to do some sort of legal covenant that would attach, we would have to have Mr. Smith and us think about what that would look like and whether or not that would have any impact on the price, which wouldn't, wouldn't bother me much because obviously the historic nature of the building, you want to keep it, so. I don't know, is there something, I mean, obviously with the hotel property, we put covenants on it, right?
Well, that was more of a use. We wanted a specific use, we wanted residential or tenancy use. I'm really not sure how to explore this, other than the building has, has a historic quality to it.
Mr. Smith, any ideas?
Yeah, probably, I think in order to sell it, it would have to be maybe a lot of color.
And I just wouldn't have any idea how to, how one of those would be, how, you know, I wouldn't want it to extend too far.
Right.
I don't find the windows to be, they're, they have historic significance. They're single pane and they're awful.
Yeah.
We have to think about that, but it might be similar to like what we do in the historic district where it's, you've got to come back for approval. You know, here's kind of the sideboards, and if you fit within that, you can make the change.
Yeah, I guess the issue gets to, is a DA enough, right? And I, I suppose we could explore that as we do one.
You know, if someone turns that into a commercial venture, for example, they're not gonna leave those two overhead doors out on Shalane.
No.
And so they need to be, be able, I mean, I wouldn't consider those to be contributing to the historic character, like, I think that's the language we use in the grand view, historic district is, wouldn't want, be limiting that. I guess I'm more concerned about the structure being just taken out.
Yeah.
I would anticipate that most everyone wants to do some sort of adaptive reuse. That's what we've heard thus far. But that would be what we would come to the council with. Here are the offers, you know, we've got three to reuse it as blank, blank, blank. The fourth one wants to demo it and put up something new. And so, you know, once we collect those, that's definitely a decision.
And maybe what we do is we just try to really hone in on the DA part of it about building's gonna stay, you're gonna, you know, and try to hone it that way as opposed to putting a list of covenants or requiring the building to stay in its current condition for whatever. I mean, at some point, someone's gonna walk from that. So, I would suggest that we just try to use the DA as a way to try to protect that character of the building the best that we can.
And if someone were to register it or go through that process, then they would be eligible for historic tax credit districts or the historic credit. And so it could be something that's financially beneficial for them as well to consider and keep.
All right, any other question?
What does DA mean?
Development agreement?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, or district attorney, if you still probably do it.
That's what he knows of.
Yeah, yeah, that's how you know it, yeah. We call it a development agreement.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, if there's any more questions, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to pass Resolution Number 2022-12, declaring real property located at 136 South Shalane Avenue a surplus to the needs of the city of Wenatchee.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt Resolution 2022-12, declaring the real property located at 136 South Shalane Avenue a surplus to the needs of the city of Wenatchee. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks Laura.
And Councilmember DA is also a hairstyle. You might remember, it gets tucked at the back.
There's some other fun uses too.
I love most everybody on this city council.
All right, sewer rates, Mr. Posenjack.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Brad Posenjack, Finance Director. Tonight, we have a ordinance to change a few sewer rates for customers who live outside the city limits. Probably 70 years ago, the city council adopted rates specific to our customer, our sewer customers outside the city limits, and set them at 150% of the rate of the inside-city-limit customers. I'm guessing some of the, it seemed reasonable because the city had to expand infrastructure outside its normal boundaries and probably need to recover some of those costs from those customers. Several years ago, the city entered into, or fast forward a bunch of years, and the city entered into an agreement with Shalane County for different development that was happening north of the Wenatchee River. And part of this agreement included language that the city would not charge customers in that area the 150% rate, that we would charge them the same rate that we charged the inside-city-limit customers. That was, so we agreed to that, and, and we've been operating that way for a few years. At a finance committee a few, or maybe a couple of months ago, this conversation bubbled up and the realization that we had some customers who are outside the city limits that are, that are paying the 150% still and other ones that are not. And we just felt that it was in the interest of the city to, just to make, to provide equity between all of our customers so that all our customers are paying, at least in the same class, that they're paying the same rates. And so, we're actually recommending to reduce the sewer rates for those customers outside, outside the city limits so that they will all be at the regular 100% rate. So all our sewer customers will be paying the same rate.
Does this affect some of the incentives that we were trying to use to get people to, you know, when we were trying to do annexations? It was one of those things that if you do come to the city, you get this rate versus being outside the city, you don't.
I think initially, that was probably the reason they did it, back when they did it. And was something that we fought hard against allowing when we did the franchise agreement with the county, but we allowed it to stay. And I think in light of our understandings of how annexations are currently working, when you really look at the cost to provide services to a residential house versus a commercial property, you know, residential areas are sort of, you know, say this, this isn't the right term, but it costs us more to provide money than the taxes we get. So, a net minus to the city. So the whole idea of holding them hostage over them coming into the city so we can lose slightly more money seems to be sort of an odder way to look at it. And I think the realization has occurred over the last, for me, over the last year or so, and even prior to that, that, yeah, it's a service that we should provide. If you want to come in, we're not gonna, you know, probably fight it. But I, I don't think that this is the reason why we should hold those sewer rates slightly higher. And if you look at the location of where they're at, that is a part of our area that is not the ones that could probably use the benefit. And so I looked at it as a fairness issue and, you know, maybe, you know, annexation needs to be dealt with differently than it is, but this is not the reason to not, not do this. So I'm, I'm inclined, the one, you know, yeah, there's part of me that, yeah, come to the city and, but now in realizing what it costs them, it's like, it's fine. And I think we're doing a service to those folks. And so, it seems to me like it's the right thing to do to make it, make it equal to everybody and will give us some sewer discounts to a couple hundred customers.
Yeah, I think there's about 300, just over 300 customers that this will impact.
And we'll get thank you notes, I'm sure, from most of them.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But I, it's, it's probably the right thing to do. Yeah. And this will take effect when?
So the ordinance takes effect 30 days after, after the adoption of it. And so, I believe.
October?
September 1st, we would start implementing the rate. But I think that would show up on people's bills that they get at the end of September, beginning of October.
Does this help computer issues too, like?
It'll be pretty, it'll be pretty easy for us to, we typically, January 1st of each year, we've got some, some sort of utility rate increases. So it'll be a pretty, it's no different than what we do then. And it's, I guess, one or two codes that we have to change. So it shouldn't be, shouldn't be too difficult.
Well, Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance Number 2022-14, amending and restating Section 4.08.060, WCC Special Provisions.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Poyar, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to adopt Order 2022-14, amending and restating Section 408.060 of the Wenatchee City Code regarding special provisions. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks Brad.
Thank you. I've got the next item too, so I'll stick.
Interlocal Agreement for District Court Services. Mr. Posenjack.
So the city has a contract with Shalane County to provide its municipal court services. And so we contract with the, with the Shalane County District Court to, to provide those services. We've had a four-year contract, and that expires the end of this year. So city staff have been working with the judges to, to review their contract. They proposed a contract that was substantially the same. The only made, the only change is a 20% increase to their rates. There hasn't been an increase to the rates since the last four-year contract was signed. So we've had four years at the same rate. So a 20% increase, the average 5% a year, it's not, it's not unreasonable. And so, because the city wants to continue these services and we feel like the rate increase is not unreasonable, we're recommending that the city council approve this, this next four-year contract with the 20% increases.
Yeah, and another, this is one of the partnerships we have with the county that works very well. So we're happy to have them do our district court stuff for us and probation. And we'll meet with them yearly or so to discuss issues, but I think it's, it's working out well. All right, any questions for Brad? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for city council to approve the interlocal agreement for providing district court services between Shalane County and the city of Wenatchee.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Roger Nostian, to approve the interlocal agreement for providing district court services between Shalane County and the city of Wenatchee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Look at us, we reduced sewer rates to the county citizens and we adopted contract with Shalane County.
All, all in one evening.
All in one evening.
County's winning.
What's next? Lease extension between the museum and the city of Wenatchee, Laura.
Yes, thank you. So the item before you is a facility lease term extension between the Wenatchee Valley Museum and Cultural Center and the city of Wenatchee. Specifically, this motion is requesting to allow the city council to negotiate, for the mayor to negotiate a lease term and approve a lease based off of applicable grant programs. And what I mean by that is, the museum has asked for an extension to their lease in order to be able to apply for grants. So grants are constantly coming up on rotation, they're constantly asking for different things. The grant that they're trying to apply for right now requires 15 years of site control. Our current lease goes through 2030, we're just a couple of years shy of that. They're also looking at a different program, which might require another couple of bumps. And so, when we put this item on the agenda, we were trying to meet an August 5th grant schedule, but just needed a little bit more time to try to figure out what that appropriate date is. So that's why there wasn't a specific lease term recommended in the motion. It's, again, allowing the mayor to negotiate and approve that. So, the, the museum staff is applying for a building for the arts grants and a couple of other ones. Those will be supporting the proposed renovation that they have coming online here in the next couple of years for the museum. So, this, again, would allow them to have that site control to be able to apply for that funding. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah, for those who have been around it long enough, every three years, we have to extend the lease because the museum goes and gets another grant that requires control of the building for 20 years. And then three years later, they get another grant that require, and so at some point, are we just gonna do this regularly? We don't have the updated lease yet because we haven't quite got it negotiated, but they need it signed soon. So we're asking for authority for us to extend it. I'm not exactly sure how long it's gonna be, if it's gonna be a 25-year total or something in there.
Yeah.
That allows them to go out and get grants and fits what, what they need.
I think we, we have, Steve Smith created the addendum to the lease, and so we're thinking 2040 should keep us safe within for those, for those two programs that they're looking at. But, so that should be the date, 2040, be the expiration. And this is only, pertains to the lease side of things. We also have an operating agreement with them that talks about how much we support in operations. And so that is staying within its own bucket and will stay with its existing timeline. So this is just for the use of the facility.
All right, any questions for Laura? If not, I would entertain a motion.
My only comment is I, I don't see any problem with making it 25 or 30-year, especially when there's language in there that allows us to terminate if we need to, if there's a problem.
Yeah.
So, I think if the longer term helps them, I think it's the way to go.
Yeah, thank you.
Your Honor, I make a move for, I move for the city council to authorize the mayor to negotiate and approve a lease extension agreement with the Wenatchee Valley Museum and Cultural Center.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to authorize the mayor to negotiate and approve a lease extension agreement with Wenatchee Valley Museum and Cultural Center. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks Laura.
Thank you.
Sergeant Hahn, Blue Bridge Alliance. I will tell you, when we talked at Finance Committee, I thought he looked like the mayor or his manager Scott Service for a minute. He told me, I said, I told him to bring the lefty today.
Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you today
Tammy, you running the show now?
Thank you. Okay, so I'm here to talk to you about the Blue Bridge Alliance. And I just kind of want to explain some, I guess, some background about why this would be important for the Wenatchee Police Department and our community in general. So the Wenatchee Police Department, actually, departments across the nation and this state are looking to improve relations with our community. And typically, officers, because of our shift, shift work, we work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we tend to contact a lot of people in crisis or who are having issues, immediate issues, that they need to have resolved. Typically, we try to send them to someone who can provide services because we have a very generous community. And we like to make sure that those services are utilized and get them in there. But there are times, especially if, if the timing is, is not good, we're not able to get ahold of somebody, that we typically fall short and we're not able to either find a way to find them services within our community. A lot of times, in my experience, what I've found is a lot of officers will pull out their, their wallet and they'll pay, get a hotel room, fill up a gas tank, get somebody some food, something like that. And for an example, on the 4th of July, this last 4th of July, we had, after the fireworks were over, it was late in the evening, after 11:30, we got a report that there was a female in distress in one of the parking lots at Walla Walla. We went and contacted her there, and she had an 11-month-old baby, and she had lost her keys out in the park somewhere. And there's no way we're gonna find the keys that night. So, we're trying to find resources, see if she has somebody locally that can help her. And she has a boyfriend, but the boyfriend took off. And when we contacted him, he was highly intoxicated. And there's no way that. And there's no way that we're going to allow that, him to come pick her up, although he was alluding to the fact that if we left, he would come and do that. She didn't have any money and with that 11-month-old baby and her, under those circumstances, we were trying to call resources in the community. And at that time of night, on a holiday, it just wasn't happening. And I remember sitting there and just kind of watching as we're calling resources and she let out a scream of frustration because she was so upset that she just couldn't get any help. She felt helpless. And those are the moments where we want to make sure this person gets taken care of. In that moment, we put our heads together and we elected to get her an Uber. And her boyfriend lived in Rock Island. We wanted to make sure that she was going to be safe there. And so we paid for it out of our own pocket. And so that is the reason why we're here and why I'm talking about Blue Bridge, because there needs to be something in place that allows officers to help somebody in need in those kind of situations. And this is why Blue Bridge is an important stopgap measure for something along those lines. So one of the goals are, actually, there's three goals for Blue Bridge. Improving relationships within the communities for law enforcement, improving connection between communities and their law enforcement officer. That way, you know, our mission to protect and serve is truly to go out there and help people in need. We have a lot of officers, I would say, all of our officers have that, the heart of a servant and they want to go out there and help people. It also makes positive contacts with our community. And when you're talking about consistently doing that, it improves morale. When people are able to help people out there, that makes you feel good. And so Blue Bridge does provide that stopgap measure. So what they do is, let me see here, first of all, I'm going to give you a little bit of history about Blue Bridge. So Blue Bridge was started in 2015 in Kennewick, Washington by now-retired Police Chief Ken Holenberg. And it was in response to issues that they had seen over time. There was actually an officer-involved shooting where an officer, prior to this incident, he had gone into a McDonald's and there was a small boy there and he didn't have any money. So he went and got him an ice cream cone and minutes later, a gunman came in, no motive, but simply just shot that officer without any reason or cause whatsoever. That really affected Chief Holenberg and a lot of different individuals in law enforcement with the idea that we need to do some, we need to make connections. What could we do to go out there and make those connections so that those kind of things just don't happen? So he created this Blue Bridge program. It was very successful. And over the last seven years, from what I read on their website, just the Kennewick Police Department has helped over 400 families in moments of crisis or individuals in moments of crisis. And so they have a really good core group of people there that were running that program. They went to the legislature and they said, we want to expand this. We want to make sure that other locations get the opportunity to have this, you know, what we're feeling here and be able to serve their community in this fashion. So they created the, obviously, they had already created the 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And the Blue Bridge Alliance, essentially what they do is they provide software, which is mostly, has to do with, I guess, managing donations. They also have recommended policies that have been vetted already through Kennewick. Kennewick is already an accredited agency with WASPIC. They offer training and actually hardware with a computer that you can access and be able to access, to be able to manage these funds. So there's a lot of agencies that have started actually this program, including, let me see, Moses Lake, Tacoma, Kirkland, Pullman, Saquamish, Kent, and East Wenatchee. And we are actually looking to partner with East Wenatchee for this program. So what they do is they got some startup money from Washington Legislature and essentially they give you some debit cards that are preloaded with about $100 worth, $100 in cash. For the Wenatchee Police Department, that would be six debit cards. We have four for our patrol sergeants, one for Officer Riley Cook, who does a lot of work with our homeless outreach, and myself. And so we partner with East Wenatchee. They're following the same system. I'm not sure how many cards, debit cards that they're using. But essentially, if somebody needs assistance in those kind of situations where you can't get social services, you're at a point where you're basically stalled and you just need to find a way to get some help, this allows you to do that. The way that it's funded, after that seed money, is through donation. And so typically, we have a lot of people in our community and we have, like I said before, we have a very generous community, but that come forward to the police department and they say, what can we do? Can we donate this? Can we donate that? Usually, we try to send them to other social services within our community. But this gives us the opportunity to really, one, provide them an option, but also make a very important impact in our community, which I think is necessary. And so my request, oh, I guess I should go into the tracking of funds, that's probably important for this, the city council here. So essentially what, East Wenatchee is going to be running the auditing system of this program. So after a supervisor's notified and that debit card ends up being used, they take the receipt for that and we end up giving it to East Wenatchee, who enters it into the system and we track those expenses. East Wenatchee tracks those expenses. And so when I say that we're talking about donations, I'm talking about donations for the East Wenatchee and Wenatchee Police Department. It is a community effort here because homelessness isn't just in one city, it's everywhere. But in these two cities, we've agreed that this is something that we can kind of share the load on and be able to assist our people in need in this community. So if there's not a supervisor that happens to be working on this shift, East Wenatchee, good chance that they would have their supervisor on. We could go vice versa if they didn't have a supervisor on as well. And so essentially, well, I guess I'll get to the conclusion here and I'll wait for your questions. But I am requesting that the city council consider signing the ILA, interlocal agreement with East Wenatchee and Wenatchee PD for the Blue Bridge Alliance program.
Sergeant Hahn.
Yes, sir.
I know I mentioned it earlier, have you seen some of the training? And I'm curious, I don't want to be an enabler and maybe you could help me with that, or repeats or enabling. How would that, I'm not sure if that's in the training or, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, I have not seen the training yet. We need to get an interlocal agreement before this is accepted and we'd actually move forward with this program. But what I would say is, police officers are excellent detectives and we know what we're, we know people that are trying to abuse or misuse a system. This is not meant for that. If somebody needs repetitive help or needs more help than we can give at that moment, that is something that we're talking, we're going to go do an outreach to our community services. This is a stopgap measure. If they need help right now at that moment, we can do that. And this gives us financial service or financial, the financial ability to be able to cover those expenses when we need that right now. I do also want to mention that it also gives us the opportunity for outreach in a way with our, with our younger folks in this community as well. And so I mentioned earlier with the Finance Committee, one of the things that you could use this for is, you know, when you're driving around the parks and you happen to see, you know, some kids out there playing and they got some ratty soccer ball that's, you know, not in good shape and you say, hey, you going to be here for a little bit? Go and get them a brand-new soccer ball. And what does that mean? The connection that you make is lasting. And that's what we're looking for. We want to make positive changes in our community. We're willing to put in the work and this gives us an opportunity to do just that. And I hope I answered your question, sir. Perfectly. Okay.
Just a couple of points of clarification. So I want to make sure that we're very clear that these are debit cards that are being used to pay for a service, but in no way, shape, or form are we giving them the debit card and say, here's a way to get what you need.
Yeah, we are responsible 100% for those debit cards. So there's no way I'm giving that thing up to somebody else. This would be a service that we would pay for and then we'd take the receipt for it and we are accountable for any money that is spent in there.
And then the other question I had was the up to 15% retainment of the money for Blue Bridge. I'm sure it's covering administration and things like that. You, you know, up to is kind of a vague thing. We don't know how much they're really going to take, but they could take up to 15% of the donations. Is that correct?
That is correct. And they are a 501(c)(3), so they do have some costs associated with the operational costs and obviously, they're providing software and other hardware stuff and so, and training as well. And so there are expenses on there. And I would say that that, that cost is relatively low in comparison to other charities that I've even given to myself in the past. And so a 10 or 15%.
It doesn't seem like an unreasonable amount to prepare a 501(c)(3) tax return and administration and they've got, I'm sure, some staff people and stuff to do. So that doesn't seem like an unreasonable amount.
Yeah.
To me.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any questions for, other questions for Sergeant Hahn? If not, I would entertain a motion. I get to the right spot.
I'll make a motion for the city council to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on the partnership operating agreement between Blue Bridge Alliance, City of East Wenatchee and the City of Wenatchee.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on the partnership operating agreement between Blue Bridge Alliance, City of East Wenatchee and the City of Wenatchee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks Sergeant. Get back to the game. I don't know what time it starts today, but we've got multiple jobs.
All right, goodnight.
Thanks. All right, if we're good with time, anybody need a break? Should keep going. We're good? All right. So our last item is a public hearing regarding our community development block grant annual action plan. So I don't think there's going to be any action to this, just sort of a public hearing to show us where we're at. Is that right Glenn?
Correct. And then also looking for some direction if the council had some preferences.
To me, like there may be an issue we got to figure out, huh? Yep.
Great. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Glenn DeVries, Community Development Director. The City of Wenatchee has a community development block grant program. That's, those are funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or what's called an entitlement community, meaning that there's a formula and they give us a certain amount of funds for our areas that qualify every year. With that, we have a five-year plan that the city adopts that guides what funds and what our goals are for those funds. And on an annual basis, we adopt a plan that specifies what those funds will be used on and what goals that they're implementing on our five-year plan. Our program runs from October 1st through September 30th annually and then when we're, once a year, we do what's called a caper to take a look at how we did, whether we've succeeded in our goals for that funding year and any carryover funds. But tonight, we're here before you on our annual action plan. The specific goals, I should be moving the slides forward as I talk here, that would help. Here we go. Our goals and objectives that we're focusing on are the expansion, development of housing and public amenities, specifically transportation and public facilities, sidewalk facilities, and then also support for our homeless programs under the Support for Public Services goal in our consolidated plan. We are required by our Citizen Participation Plan to hold two public hearings. Tonight is the first. We provided notice in the paper. There is a comment period that extends through August 9th and then we need to hold a second hearing on August 11th. This is incorrect. We now have four public comments that we've received and those comments, including one of which was from the Schland-Dougus Community Action Council, have requested that the council consider adding back funding for the Literacy Council, which has historically been $30,000 under our public services provision that we can do under the plan. At the direction of the council, we've had a number of workshops and the direction we received and feedback was to really focus our program. We don't get many funds, but to focus the program on sidewalk work. And so the plan before you does that. In addition, we've had staff turnover for the program, so we've really been looking at the program itself and trying to be more efficient. We've hired a professional consultant. Many of you know David Stahlheim. He does a lot of work on training and doing programs for large and small jurisdictions, including Tacoma. He's really good at what he does and he has identified things that we don't need to do anymore, things that we should need, consider for changes. And one of them, we specifically asked about efficiency. And I think some of the council members have asked about that. There's a certain point with consolidated plans that it's not efficient, it's the federal government. It's, there are just steps, whether it's a small project or big project, that you have to go through every time. We're trying to get better at it though, because we're trying to do the training. We have our consultant who will be with us through next year to help us get as efficient as we can, given the requirements we have. But one of the things that both HUD, the federal agency, and our consultant have said is, don't do little projects. Do big projects and do them, what most jurisdictions do is they do big projects and they do them every single year. They get a template, they follow it, and that's how you get efficient with the program. So you're not tracking down small grants. So we did receive, you know, the initial direction and through our workshops to do sidewalks. What we also recommend as staff is that you stick with the larger projects, that you not fund small projects, such as the Literacy Council. Now, with that being said, staff totally agrees with the comments that have been submitted on behalf of the Literacy Council. It's an excellent program, it's a huge asset to the community. And one of the things that staff recommends you might consider is maybe funding that through general funds versus through the consolidated block grant program as a small grant. And so that we can work to restructure our grant program to be more efficient. It is a big burden on staff. We're trying to move away from that and have a more efficient program. With that being said though, we are looking for your feedback tonight. And if you'd like us to add that back in. us to add that back in, we would like to know that tonight, so that we can prepare that for the hearing on August 11th. Just a little more information, we received $256,610 in our program allocation for this year. We, as far as how that's broken up, we're allowed to spend $51,322 for administration. A lot of that will be spent on consultants. By the end of next year, we're hoping to pull back from that, so that we can administer that as staff. The $263,263 allocated for pedestrian infrastructure and facilities, specifically in coordination with Public Works, the projects would be between Fifth Street and Washington, below Miller and above Shland Avenue. We do have some carryover funds that were COVID-designated community development block grant funds, and we would be working with homeless programs to spend those down. It will be a little tricky, given timelines, but we're gonna do our best to spend those down next year. So, actions before you that we're requesting. We're holding our public hearing. We do need to take in public testimony tonight. You also have your public comments, and more can be submitted up to August 9th. We, again, are looking for your direction on whether you'd like us to, for consideration and final decision at the next meeting, make any changes to staff's initial recommendation for you. And then, we'd look, request that you continue the hearing to August 11th, for decision only to adopt the final version of the plan, as you would like for your percentages and allocations, and authorize the mayor to sign assurances, certifications, and contracts necessary to implement that plan. Are there any questions that I can try to answer?
How much funds did the literacy council get? Is it, was it 15% or was it 30 grand? What did we give them last night?
It's about 30, 30,000, essentially narrowing down to a maximum of the 15% that we're allowed to.
Got it. And so, Brad, does our general fund have 30 grand for the literacy council? If we chose to fund it out of general, keep it out of this mess? Just go like this.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you.
I had 30,000 in there. I know there will be a lot of questions. We had a question.
Okay. Legal use? He said yes.
So if that does happen, I'm, I'm all about trying to make things as efficient, as cumbersome as government is. If we can make anything streamlined, that's an improvement. And we could stretch those dollars farther for what we actually need them for. My two cents?
That's 15%.
Yeah.
So, 15% in the past has been about 30,000, 'cause 15% of the 256,000 is like...
40?
38.
Yeah.
Five.
So obviously, I think what we'd do is we would probably stick a number in there that was probably in our budget, something closer to 30. Maybe meet with them and see sort of where it falls in. But I think, as cumbersome as this is, and as this council has decided they want to spend money on sidewalks, and I think I'm gonna get a request from some of the councils to spend more money on sidewalks, we should probably spend money on sidewalks where we can, and try to fund the other stuff out of a pot that isn't associated with that. That'd be my thought.
And it doesn't mean that we couldn't go back to doing the way we have been, and if this doesn't work out.
Yeah. Things change or something, yeah. But it seems to me like...
If we can, if we can streamline it, no longer have a consultant, there's a good chunk of money right there.
Yeah. Yeah.
The consultant fund is paid with admin.
Is, is there a timing issue for the literacy council? In other words, the new fiscal year starts...
In October.
And they would get their check in...
On a monthly basis, starting from October.
Okay, so we would divide that 38 by 12, and they'd get 3,000 a month. So it's about the end of the world if they're a part of next year's budget cycle, for lack of a better term, or if we needed to...
They have a number of funding partners, so haven't spoken to them about this, but it seems reasonable that they could shift their funds.
Okay. And that we could put them in the 2023 budget, if that was the desire of the council, and then, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm inclined just to do sidewalks and find a different pot of money for the literacy council.
I think they assist in language training, or...
Teaching English to Spanish-speaking?
And, and adult, adult literacy.
Yes.
Yeah.
And who runs that? Is that the community action that runs that?
They run the whole program. I think there's other people that work underneath them, right? Yeah.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a council.
Yeah.
It's independent, well, it's not, it's tight, it's under that umbrella, I believe. And then they have a lot of community volunteers that do the education portions.
Yeah. And they used to do it at the community center. I'm not sure whether they're doing it now, but, so, I think it's a program we're supporting, and we got some letters asking for support, and I think what we ought to consider is trying to do it out of a general fund, and then get this money into sidewalks. Do we have a, have we picked a street yet?
They have an area and a number of projects within them that they've provided in coordination with them, and...
Okay.
So we got enough specific, enough specifics in the plan to, to satisfy our requirements. And then we get into the details for actual projects next year.
So the direction we have for you is to leave it the way it is, right? And then we'll have a public hearing in another couple of weeks and adopt it?
Right.
That makes sense?
And then if we could get a motion to continue the hearing for, until next, until August 11th, for decision only?
Okay. So let's, let's first hear from all of our friends in the audience. Who would like to address the city council on this public hearing item? Anybody wish to address the council? Anybody on the phone? Hearing none, I will turn over to the council for their action.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we continue this public hearing to August 11, 2022, at 5:15 p.m., or soon thereafter, as it's our agenda, this, for a decision only, for the purpose of adopting the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Second. Oh.
And authorize the mayor to sign associated assurances, certifications, and contracts necessary for implementing the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Harold, to continue this public hearing till August 11, 2022, at 5:15 p.m., or shortly thereafter, for a decision only to adopt the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, authorize the mayor to sign associated assurances, certifications, and contracts necessary for implementing the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Glenn.
All right, thank you.
Laura, I know we talked earlier. What's on the list?
You want to talk about UPS?
Yeah, so I signed a lease yesterday with UPS. Again, they're using our site out on North Wenatchee Avenue. You may have already seen a vehicle or two out there, our storage unit. So they were running out of room down there. They're anxious to get that started a little earlier. So we got six months at 10,000 a month. We got about a $60,000 check from UPS to use the Wash Dot site as a temporary holding site. We should be excited about that.
Are they looking for a bigger property?
My understanding is they're looking for a new location. That will be very difficult to find, an industrial building big enough. They've been crammed in that old building down there for a long, long time. Park their trucks sideways on the streets, and...
It's industrial property, it's just whether they have the money to build, and...
They like to lease, and so whether they'll find someone to build them, and this kind of industrial site they're gonna need's gonna be pretty expensive to build, 'cause they're gonna need room for expansion. So you're talking about Malaga, or the airport, or Baker Flat, and there's not as much industrial space as it might, you might think there is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right? You sort of think there's a lot, and you go, Microsoft's gonna take a bunch of it, and...
There's quite a bit at Baker Flats. It's just not prepared for development. All the stuff on the west side of the...
Yeah.
No building, sure, that's the east side of it.
Okay? What's next?
A letter for the museum.
Yeah, so we did get a letter drafted. We're still working on it for the, the money that we talked about, the $2 million over a period of time. So I don't know if you're aware of that. We went through Finance and Public Works Committee.
For?
For their museum long-term improvements.
Museum.
Yeah. So we agreed both the Public Works and Finance to prepare a letter, so I'll be signing something similar to what we did with the lie, in terms of, we're here, and here's the money, and we'll figure out sort of when, based on how your fundraising goes, and...
Yeah. There was a possibility story yesterday. Do you want to chat about that?
Yeah, so we did the possibilities tour downtown, so they checked out a number of buildings. We started at the Midtown, checked out the game...
E-Poc.
You haven't been in that building. That's something else, and I didn't realize there was a bar in there.
Yeah.
Not that I get excited, but there's a bar in the game, in the game place, E-Poc.
Food and beverage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Super nice. We toured the Wenatchee World Building, which has changed hands, and then went through Todd Keyes's building, and then we did spend quite a bit of time here showing folks the third floor and the second floor, and then they did get to wander through downstairs, and downstairs is really starting to look nice, so. I don't know when we get to go in and look again, this group, but it's coming along very nicely.
Yes. So that's the next item, the ribbon-cutting date.
So ribbon-cutting is November 17th, but we're gonna be in there long before that.
Yeah, so we'll move staff in at the end of October, and we'll have about two weeks' worth of a soft opening, kind of a soft launch, so that they can figure out where things are.
Should we, let the, let us all tour in a couple of weeks? Can we arrange?
Yeah.
Maybe 4:30 on the 11th?
Yes.
Can we do that?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So, why don't we plan on 4:30 and 11th, and we'll get Alyssa to come in and give you guys a grand tour of downstairs. It's coming along very nicely.
That was it.
Yeah. We do have, I did mention, I talked to all seven of the council members regarding some mid-level wage adjustments for some of our employees, so we do have agreements subject to your guys' approval for the August 11th from our AFSCME group. We're still negotiating with our police guild, but we do have a MOU signed by the AFSCME Guild, it's just waiting for my signature, so obviously, your approval of that. So maybe we'll have both of them on August 11th, maybe we won't, but hopefully, we will, but it looks like at least one of the bargaining groups is, we have an agreement I don't know what else. We've just been super busy. There's just, it seems like a ton going on. We met with the PUD this week, we've met with...
Met the PUD, we met with the architects for LSE to start off the convention center process. Yeah, just met with the PAC.
We are, Laura and I are going to Nispelum in a couple of weeks to meet with the Colvilles regarding the Skookum sign. So they approached us a couple of weeks ago and want to meet with us, so we're heading up, and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the idea of doing...
We have no idea.
Okay.
They just, I read enough, wanted to talk, and so we're meeting with their cultural committee, I think.
Yeah, the, the letter expressed interest in, you know, that the, they felt like the sign was representative of their community and wanted to discuss its future, basically.
Excellent.
And the last email I got from Bluebird was, we're just not interested in dealing with the city, so. Not sure how else to describe it, other than that. Yeah.
Maybe they can deal with the tribe.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else? Councilmembers?
National Night Out, Tuesday, the 2nd.
Yep, and you all each have a park, and some of those that are at-large can go to many parks. I will be at whatever ones I can get to.
If you go to several of them, you have ice cream...
Multiple times?
Four times.
Yeah.
Are you and I just moving through the parks, or what are we doing?
I don't know that I can make it, so I'm gonna do my best.
Pioneer.
I'll tell you what, I'll hit them all.
It's a venue.
Good luck with that, the mayor. Mayor struggled last year.
I got them all. We only had three last year, and I got them all. This year, there's five, so it'll be harder to get to all of them, but...
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if I'm gonna be out of town or not at the moment, unfortunately, so.
I will be there, somewhere, at one of the parks.
Okay. Perfect.
I have a...
We had chamber meeting this last week. It went well. I had great notes. My battery just died.
Okay.
Housing market is kind of interesting right now. I guess there's several houses that have been listed now that are over a million. What was there, three or four Elvis that were above 2 million now? That was quite an eye-opener. But there's also been a little bit of relaxing with prices, the way he described it, so his thought was, people who had listed at a big number, hoping to find somebody are now realizing that's not gonna happen. So there's actually been a few houses that have gone down in price, so. Still lots of pressure, though. Our Honda dealer owner is now driving a Jeep, because he has no Hondas.
Okay, yeah. For a while, yeah.
So the car, car problems haven't relaxed much.
No.
About it. Solid waste next week, so.
I did, just for, I don't think I even told Laura, so I met with Shland Rotarians, who have the ice crush, no, the glass crushing machine, that turns it into sand and aggregate. So Barry was here, and what a great guy. And then I was up that way last weekend and stopped in and watched them crush all the ice, or ice, the glass. What an impressive thing, to watch that come out of sand. I mean, you just stick your hand in it, and it's like... So they would like for us to do something. When you mentioned solid waste, it sort of made me think about, maybe we ought to...
And the three Wenatchee Rotary Clubs are, are interested in, they've been tracking that. I think the steam kind of melted out, but there is still an interest on the environmental stewardship side of the clubs.
Yeah.
For doing something, if we can partner, particularly with the Wine Reese. I mean, that's how they did it at Shland, they were able to partner with the Wine Reese to have a product.
Yeah.
And, and part of the problem is, is it's all being done by volunteer groups right now, and their machine is limited, and now, and then, I, I haven't heard how well they've done marketing the sand, or...
They are, they either...
The demand for it, I guess.
Yeah, so Goodfellows asked for 120 cubic yards to fill up their trenches when they were doing the fingers, and of course, they only had 10 cubic yards to get them, so that didn't really work. So they've got people that sort of want it, right? And so I think they're not gonna have any problem getting it out. It's, you know, there's the crushing part of it, which maybe you could do by volunteers, maybe not, but then you need front-end loaders, you need people running forklifts. It's more than just...
Yeah, I think it's a great pilot, and now that it's been pretty successful, the question is, is what's the next level for it?
Yeah, and so again...
And I would love to see the city get involved in it. The biggest problem is still the bottle collection and everything else, so...
Yeah, yeah, and I just didn't know if, even the site where they do the oil collection, if that's a big enough site, if they put a glass machine there, now all of a sudden, you might be able to get a few more. I don't know, I haven't, gotta find a spot someplace to do. I mean, but I just want you to know, I had the conversation, and it's very interesting, and... Watching the bottles come in, I was sticking my hand under this machine, going, is it gonna cut me up? And it just comes out like sand.
Yeah.
Just amazing. Yeah. All right, I don't need to give them any more time.